Call to order, the July 20, 2020 County Commission meeting to order. Welcome all of our guests tonight and encourage you to come back as often as you can. Tonight Commissioner Stafford will have the pledge and she has asked me to do the prayer, so I will do the prayer first and then we'll go from there. Aaron, can you mute that for me? Thank you, sir. Bye with me, please. Lord, as always, we just come before you and thank you for the many blessings of life that you've given us. We thank you for this opportunity to gather as a body, Lord, and conduct business for the citizens of Wilson County. Where we live in times that are uncertain for all of us and strange and, Lord, we lack wisdom for lots of decisions, but we lean on you, Lord, to give us that wisdom. We pray you will intervene as we meet tonight and let your will be done. Lord, there are many around us that are hurting for many reasons, some economically, some physically, some emotionally. We pray for those tonight in our county. We pray that for those that we will celebrate tonight. We're thankful for them and the contributions that they've made to this county. We just ask now that you'll go with us and guide and direct us in everything that we do and help us to represent you in a good light, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Please rise. Commissioner Stafford, you can go ahead.
Are you muting out Terry? He did.
Go ahead, Commissioner Stafford.
Yes, I did because I know that I do this every day. This is a pretty complicated process, so. They'll get it done.
Are we ready for the pledge?
We are. Yes, ma'am.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in itself.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in itself.
The rest, sit down. I don't know if we have the money. We time.
This time we will have, if you record your presence at tonight's meeting, and I will call to you, the people that are present by Zoom. Commissioner Stafford, Commissioner Bannock, Commissioner McFarland, Commissioner Bishop, Commissioner Breeze, Commissioner Patton, Commissioner Robinson, and Commissioner Ash. Those are all present as commissioners at tonight's meeting. If you are courtiers. I did say. McFarland, yes. Commissioner Glover. We do have 25 present, accounted for. We will not have the historian moment tonight, to my knowledge, and we'll move forward with the report from the steering committee. Commissioner Patton. Move forward with the steering committee, Commissioner Patton.
Steering committee met tonight, 6:45. You'll have those minutes, the minutes from the last meeting are in your packet, but not the minute 6:45. And make a motion that the minute picked up in this procedure.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? But the record reflected was unanimous. Adoption of the agenda, Commissioner Stafford?
That we adopt the agenda?
Got a motion by Commissioner Patton, a second by Commissioner Bernard. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? The record reflected was unanimous.
Hey, I'm about to get nuts over here. I'm sorry. Like I got vertigo or something.
You're like, oh, it would stop.
How will we do to cut out the echo? If I cut my.
Just turn it off. That's great. We're good right now.
Can he move?
You good, Aaron? You think it'll happen now? Okay, good to go. This time, special recognition, we'll start out with Commissioner Marlowe and the Day of Prayer for Schools proclamation.
Day of prayer. They're not even at school.
I will get that to the appropriate people.
Resolution 20-7-1, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, designating August 2nd, 2020, as a day of prayer for our schools in Wilson County. Whereas, a day of prayer for our schools was conceived by members of the Quanis Club of Lebanon, Tennessee during the summer of 1999 after the murder of several students and teachers at Columbine High School in Littleton, Colorado. The tragedy caused Americans across the nation concern for the safety of their children at school. Sadly, this was not the last example of violence in an American school. Whereas, the first observation of a day of prayer for our schools was sponsored by the Quanis Club of Lebanon on August 14th, 1999. Whereas, this project has been repeated each year since then, 22 annual observances, excuse me, of a day of prayer for our schools to be held on August 2nd, 2020. The Quanis Clubs of both Lebanon and Mount Juliet have joined together to sponsor this community-wide project. This project seeks to unite the entire community in prayer for the safety of our children by encouraging all churches and places of worship to dedicate a portion of their worship services that day to special prayer, seeking God's help in keeping our children safe at school. And whereas, the first two objects of Quanis are to give primary to the human and spiritual rather than the material values of life and to promote the daily living of the golden rule in all human relationships. With no greater blessing from God than the gift of our children, Quanis members believe that the safety of our children at school should be very high priority, and they are requesting the entire community to join in the effort. Quanis also believes that the solutions to many of our problems exist in our society are spiritual in nature rather than political, and new laws and more metal detectors in our schools will not change the way people treat others. Members of the Quanis Club believe that there is no better thing than prayer to seek a safe school environment for our children. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that in futhers of this effort of the members of the Quanis Club of Lebanon and Mount Juliet, Wilson County, Tennessee, we hereby designate August 22nd, 2020, as a day of prayer for our schools in Wilson County and urge the entire county to join in this effort.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Marlowe, and I will get this to proper people tomorrow. This time now for a special recognition, Commissioner Suvenata and Commissioner Jerry McFarland. No, no. Six feet is good.
I'll speak up. Mr. Jack Cato, who most of you know, has lived in this county for many, many years, and he turned 90 yesterday. We surprised him with a drive-through parade. We had a police escort. He is in the pavilion, so he cannot be here this evening. But Jerry McFarland and I have known him for many, many years, and we wanted to do a proclamation for him. So, resolution number 20-7-2, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring Jack Cato and wishing him a belated happy birthday. Whereas, Jack Cato celebrated his 90th birthday on July the 19th. And whereas, born during the height of the Great Depression, Jack grew up on a farm in Roll Smith County, Tennessee, attending a one-room school through the eighth grade located in the Cato community. And whereas, Jack was destined to be an entrepreneur, beginning his career buying candy bars from the small country store and selling them to the soldiers during the World War II maneuvers. And whereas, Jack owned and operated Cato TV and appliance for 43 years, selling and servicing televisions, radios, stereos, VCRs, major appliances, lawn mowers, tillers, and furniture. And whereas, he was the first in the state of Tennessee to sell weed eaters. And whereas, Jack participated in many other business endeavors, building Timberline Campground, which he and his family operated for 11 years, and being one of the founders of Cracker Barrel Old Country Store, where he served on the Board of Directors for 15 years. And whereas, Jack has made many contributions to Lebanon and Wilson County, being a founder of the City of Lebanon Museum and History Center, where for many years he led tours through the museum and worked with the Lebanon, Wilson County Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Department, serving as a step-on guide for local tourists throughout Wilson County. And whereas, Jack was instrumental in the opening and dedication of the Sellers Farm located off Sparta Pike, south of Lebanon. And whereas, always the history enthusiast, he owns a collection of books, memorabilia, and videos that he loves to talk about and share with all of his friends. And whereas, Jack received the Community Spirit Award from the City of Lebanon and is a lifetime member of the Lebanon, Wilson County Chamber of Commerce. And whereas, Jack, after interacting with soldiers during World War II maneuvers, served in Korea with the 101st Combat Engine Engineer Battalion, charged with disabling landmines. And from his history with the military, Jack and his family donated the marker at Cumberland University to remember the 21 soldiers that lost their lives in the Cumberland River during the World War II maneuvers. Whereas, Jack and his wife Ruth, and by the way, Ruth passed away this past Monday, have two children, son Michael and daughter Cynthia, and two grandchildren. And whereas, Jack Cato exemplifies the American dream and a true American hero. But when his name is mentioned for honors and for possibly naming a building or a landmark in Wilson County after him, he will tell you simply and quickly, I do the things I do because I love Wilson County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby honor and recognize Jack Cato for his many, many contributions to Lebanon and Wilson County, to his family, to his country, and to his commitment to preserve history, and offer him a belated happy, happy birthday, and many, many more. I move that this resolution be approved.
All in favor, say aye.
And I want to take just a minute. Mayor, I want to recognize someone. Scott Harris is back in the audience, and he works with the tourism office. I think you've been working since last August, July, August, on the murals. And I passed around this sheet. They have completed, actually, there was five murals completed. There was one at the Jamesy Award Act Center, but it wasn't done on the proper material, so it has been destroyed. So these four are here in the county. The second one is at the Charlie Daniels Park, and you can kind of see Charlie here in the corner, and then it's fitting that Charlie is on that now. This mural committee has done a wonderful job working with them and doing this, and we're going to try to find them some more money within the next few months so they can finish six more murals and maybe redo the one at the Ag Center and have 20-something murals throughout this county that people can come and see. So I hope you all will support that effort. And by the way, I do have a new mask that was presented to me. I'm a big Elvis fan, so there you go. Thank you, Dan Walker.
Thank you, Commissioner Vanata. This time we'll have Commissioner reading of the, I'm sorry, report from the Minutes Committee. Commissioner Bishop. Will we be able to hear, Aaron? Commissioner Bishop, you can go ahead. Okay.
Mayor, I'll give the report for you if we can.
Okay, let's do that.
Minutes Committee met in the Commissioner Room on June 15th, 2020, 6:45 minutes. Requested to be accepted.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? We did have planned for Mr. Charlie Curtis, it is your rep for the county commissioners to be here tonight, but we felt like with all the stuff that was going on, it might be a better time for him to come another month, and so he's graciously said he would do that, kind of give us all an update of kind of how things went during the legislative session as things deal with the counties. Mr. Goodall, any additions to be added to the notary list? Notary list is good. I hear a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? But the record reflected was unanimous. Audit Committee, there are five members here that you can confirm if you'd like to the appointment. These commissioners are Commissioner Kenny Rich, Commissioner Chad Bernard, Commissioner Robert Fields, along with Mr. John Lancaster and Mr. Jerry Taylor. Do I hear a motion to approve those? I got a motion and a second. Now, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. And opposed? None opposed? We'll let the record reflected was unanimous. Yes? Commissioner Ash?
And allow us to vote on the replacement of the road zone.
Okay, I've got one more, Commissioner Ash, and then we'll let you do that. I got, you are to appoint one member to the Board of Zoning Appeals to serve a five-year term. I'd like to recommend to you for your consideration, Mr. Mark Kohinsky. Information about Mr. Kohinsky was in your packet. Do I hear a motion? I hear a second. I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Now, Commissioner Ash, you'd like to suspend the rules?
Renew my motion to nominate Chad Bernard for the road zone back.
So I got a motion. I have a motion to suspend the rules that will do away with the paper ballot voting and do a roll call vote now. So do I hear a motion to suspend the rules? I got a motion. Do I hear a second? I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. And opposed? Any opposition? Seeing none, rules are suspended. Commissioner Gentry?
I'd like to make a nomination of Dan Walker as well.
Okay, all right. So we'll do, we'll start first with Commissioner Walker, and then we also had Commissioner Bernard that was nominated by Commissioner Ash. Do I hear other nominations for Commissioner Weathers? Got you. Commissioner, any other nominations? Remember that these are the people that qualify. Commissioner Fields, Commissioner Bernard, Commissioner Costley, Commissioner Walker, Commissioner Breeze, Commissioner Marlowe, and Commissioner Smith. Those are the ones that can qualify to run for this office for Road Superintendent, I'm Road Commissioner, sorry, Mr. Murphy, Zone Two. I have two now. Any one else? Any other nominations? Do I hear a motion to nomination cease? All in favor, say aye. Okay, at this time now, we will vote in mic. We will do this by roll call? Okay, and so I will make a roll call, and as I do that, we will, they will just give me who they vote for. Is that correct? Okay. Do we all understand how we're going to do this? Okay, so we will start with District One, and I'll just go down through the roll here. And as soon as Ms. Sandra's ready.
I'm ready.
Okay. Mr. Rich doesn't have to overlook this, does he?
No.
Got you, okay. So we will start, you have two people that you have on the table to vote for, Commissioner Dan Walker and Commissioner Chad Bernard. So I'll start with Commissioner Fields. Commissioner Bernard.
Bernard.
Go to Ms. Bannock.
Chad Bernard.
Chad Bernard. I'll go to Mr. Franklin. Mr. Bernard. I'll go to Mr. Bernard.
I guess I'll vote for Mr. Bernard.
I'll go to Commissioner McFarland. I'll go to Commissioner Rich, votes for Mr. Bernard. Commissioner Scruggs?
All the blood running.
There you are.
Mr. Scruggs, Mr. Scruggs, Mr. Scruggs, Mr. Scruggs. Can you hear me? Mr. Scruggs, and give me a vote.
He's hanging upside down, Mayor. I don't think he hears you.
I'm going to come back to him. Commissioner Costley?
What are we voting on?
Commissioner Bernard.
Going to go now to Commissioner Breeze. Okay, my bad. I can go back the other way. My bad, okay. Commissioner Patton?
Bernard.
Commissioner Walker?
Bernard.
Commissioner Gentry?
Bernard.
Commissioner Ash? Commissioner Ash?
He just heard a hearing.
Mr. Robinson? Commissioner Jones?
Bernard.
Mr. Dow is Commissioner Bernard. And Commissioner Weathers? Chad Bernard. Mr. Ali is Chad Bernard. Commissioner Breeze now. My bad. Okay. And now I go back to, I think, Commissioner Glover. And I will go to Commissioner Stafford. Okay, okay. Chad Bernard. I read her lips. Commissioner Kurtz?
Dan Walker.
Mr. Marlowe? Commissioner Vanata? Commissioner Bishop? Commissioner Bishop?
I think she's, she's gone.
Commissioner Smith? I do not have one from Commissioner. I could call them both.
We have, we have 17 deaths in the county.
Is that what you think?
On this virus. I dare say no.
Be sure to watch Aaron's funny videos.
Commissioner Bishop?
I really do.
It did, yes, ma'am. You were good, you were good there. No trouble there. How about Bernard? Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you so much.
I don't understand how.
I don't think so. Dan Walker. Mr. Scruggs? Well, I'm trying to get him on the meeting to answer who he votes for. This is.
Is there another one? No, it says there.
Commissioner Scruggs, do you vote for Mr. Walker or Mr. Bernard? I couldn't hear you. Bernard, okay. Thank you so much, okay? So they both voted for that, so it is 14, I mean 24 to one. Commissioner Bernard, congratulations, Mr. Bernard.
Thank y'all for y'all's support.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz.
You're welcome.
Report from Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Glover. No report. Emergency Management Director's report. Commissioner Glover, could you hear me? No report, okay. The Director's report was in your packet for Director Cooper. I would make a motion, I would take a motion to approve that.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions? Commissioner Gentry?
Yeah, on the, on the report, it says that COVID is March 23rd to May 25th. Do we have later numbers on that?
The later numbers on the numbers that are in.
The county cases, the deaths, the recovered, the active.
They are updated every day on our website under the COVID tab, and yes, sir.
But it's not in the report. I'm just asking.
Okay, yes, I, he, I don't know why he doesn't have it in his report, but we put it out every day from our office. I will ask him to put that in his report next time for all of them.
Okay, thank you.
See what now? Okay. He, Commissioner, I mean, Ms. Robinson said, I mean, Ms. Dowd, he said that that was just a state of emergency numbers that he has listed there on that page, not the COVID active cases.
As it stated emergency, it says expired. I thought we had a new one. Is that true or no?
This is the one probably back on the tornado. Yeah, that was on the tornado, not on the one that we just did. Do you follow me?
No, I don't, but that's all. Okay, I understand there's more than one state of emergency. But this seemed to be on the pandemic in the report, not on the tornado. Is that not true?
This is on the pandemic, yes, and during the state of emergency, while it was declared, that's the number of cases that we had. It expired, and then we did another one on June 24th.
Right.
Yes, sir. He doesn't have that one in this packet.
We don't have that in.
He don't have that one, no. Just during that time.
That's just what I was asking about. I thought maybe we should have a later.
Yes, sir. And it's, the state of emergency is only good for a week unless we renew it, and we did not renew it. Any other questions for Mr. Cooper? I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? But the record reflected was unanimous. Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Rich. Sheriff's report, he is not here tonight, but he did put his report in your packet. Any question, any, do I hear a motion to approve that? Got a motion and a second. Now, any discussion? Entry from last time, or has he got another question? No questions? All in favor on the report from the Sheriff's Department, say aye. All opposed? But the record reflected was unanimous as well. Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Stafford. No report. Director of Schools report was also in your packet tonight. Do I hear a motion to approve it? We do. Any questions for the director? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. But the record reflected was unanimous as well. Registered report was in your packet. Do I take a motion to approve those? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? But the record reflected was unanimous. The trustees report, Mr. Major, was also in your packet. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. The record reflected was unanimous as well. Road Superintendent, Mr. Murphy is here tonight, but his packet, his report was in your packet. Do I hear a motion to approve that one? Any questions for Mr. Murphy? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? The record reflected was unanimous as well. Ag Center report, Mr. Quentin Smith is here tonight with us. Packet was, the report was in your packet, excuse me? They were, I'm sorry, they were distributed, not that one was, and the previous one as well. Do I hear a motion to approve the Ag Center report? Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? The Expo report is there. I know Ms. Gill is with us tonight for the Expo. The Expo report is there, I know Ms. Gill is with us tonight for the Expo Center, do I hear a motion to approve her report?
Motion. Second.
Second, any questions? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Let the record reflect it was unanimous as well. Report from the Public Works Committee, Commissioner Weathers.
No report.
Act Center Management Report, Commissioner Scruggs. Can you work that one for me, Mr. Rich?
Yes, the Act Center Committee, June the thirtieth, at the Act Center, the minutes are in your packet, I have the motion, these be receiving files.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Animal Control, Commissioner Marlowe.
No report.
Audit, Commissioner Bernard.
Yes, our Audit Committee met tonight at six in upstairs in the conference room, minutes being next month's packet, I move to be receiving file.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Record reflect it was unanimous. Cable Tax, Commissioner Walker?
Yes, the Cable TV Committee met this evening in the downstairs conference room, the minutes will be available in the next packet.
Move to receive the minutes. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Developing Tourism, Commissioner Vanada?
No report, but may I make a comment, please?
Yes, ma'am.
In your WILCO paperwork that was handed out to you tonight by the Tourism Director, he reported that he turned in fifty thousand back into the general fund, I would like to see us take about twenty thousand of that and use it toward the mural project, and I'll have a tourism meeting before the next meeting and carry it through the proper committees.
The Ethics Committee, Commissioner Ash.
No report.
Thank you. Finance, Commissioner Weathers.
No report.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Patton.
No report.
Insurance, Commissioner Ash.
No report.
Thank you, sir. Judicial, Commissioner Glover.
No report.
Planning and Zoning, Commissioner McFarland.
No report.
Rules, Commissioner Gentry.
No report.
Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Rich.
Yes, the Urban Type Facility Board met at the Road Commission Office on July the tenth, many times.
No report. No report.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Let the record reflect it was unanimous. Finance Director's Report, Mr. Aaron Maynard. As Mr. Maynard comes, I would like to take this time to thank Ms. Sarah Davenport for all the work she did to kind of make this come together, I know it doesn't seem at times like it's smooth, but it is, without her doing what she's doing, it's really a challenge, and Aaron Wilson as well. Aaron, thank you for what you do to help us to get this together where people can communicate from all sides. Mr. Maynard?
Thank you, and Teresa.
And Teresa, my bad.
Just quickly, this is, every year we have to do this three-star community thing, it requires us to go over our debt management policy, which I sent out to you today, at least I hope I did, Mr. Gentry said I might have sent the financial management policies out, did everybody receive a copy of the debt management policy by email? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, good. Basically, you know, it's to achieve the lowest cost of capital, maintain improved credit ratings, assure reasonable cost, access to the capital markets, preserve financial and management flexibility, and manage interest rate risk exposure. It's got, you know, several pages in here, the main thing is this is on file with the Comptroller's Office, this is the guidance that we use, probably most important to you is on the second page, all debt must be formally authorized by resolution of the county's legislative body, so we cannot issue debt without sheer approval. So there is a complete copy, I sent you one today by email, if you did not get one and you want to see it, it is definitely on file in my office, so you're welcome to either ask me for a copy or come up and see it if you didn't receive it. Annual Cash Flow Statement, this acknowledgement that prior to the issuance of debt, a cash flow forecast is prepared for the appropriate fund and submitted. Most of you guys are familiar with these CT forms. Basically, on the second page of every one of those CT forms, every time we do a debt issue, there's a cash flow, that, and the Comptroller's Office approves those, that we do have the cash available to make the debt payments. So we do that as well, and then finally, Confirmation of Documented Internal Controls, this is for two thousand and twenty, I did not email all this out to you, this is our internal control documentation, including flow charts, you're more than welcome to come to my office and inspect the internal control documents, not only do I have one, but most of the elected officials offices, the fee offices in particular, have internal control documents of their own. Lastly, somebody, Commissioner, had asked me a question, and I apologize for not sending this out by email, I didn't realize that we weren't all going to be here tonight, had asked me a question about adequate facility tax. Basically, what's on your desk just shows the month of June, in Fund One Fifty-One, we deposited five hundred and two thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-one cents, that is two-thirds of the AFT received, the other one-third, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, ninety-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents is deposited into capital projects. So if you want to break that down per five thousand, for every adequate facilities tax permit issued, one thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars goes into capital projects, three thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars goes into the General Debt Service Fund. That was in response to a question asked me by Commissioner, a Commissioner earlier. That concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
Aaron, could you mention something about three-star?
I did, all this.
Got it, my bad.
Yep.
Didn't hear you, my bad.
Yep.
Mr. Franklin?
Yeah, I just have one question, I noticed the state of Tennessee reporting pretty impressive revenue numbers actually for last month.
Yes.
And up four point six percent in the middle of this seems extraordinary to me.
Yes, sir.
They, what I read was, it was, even though some funds were down statewide, some were up, and enormous amount of the sales tax, internet sales tax. Has Wilson County received any, anything along that line that you have noticed a little unusual?
Sales tax looked good, I looked at it today, now you have to remember, this was for the month of June, and that is when our sales tax increase went into effect. But it was not down by any stretch of the imagination, it was over seven million, now some of that, again, you had a twenty-two percent increase in your sales tax rate, your local option, so you went from two-two-five to two-seven-five. But so far, everything I'm seeing looks pretty strong with the exception of hotel motel tax, if you want me to point to one thing that looks like it's dragging, right now, I'd have to say hotel motel tax, everything else is running fairly strong, I'll give you a more complete report that, on that next month.
Thank you.
And I can send you the internet numbers as well as the sales tax, and I try to get those to you like I got that to you today on that report you're talking about, and also, Tom Breschers has brought me by the year-to-date on the AFT, and I'll get that to you as well on the number of permits, and so I'll do that for you tomorrow, okay?
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the mayor for the mask mandate, most people say I've never looked better, so.
Amen.
Commissioner Walker?
Just, could you give us a quick status update on the budget book and where we are so far?
Yeah, first off, we'll get that posted online this week, and those should be in the process of being printed, probably by the time we get together next month, I hope, to have them printed and have them out to everybody.
Commissioner Stafford, I know you have a question for Mr. Maynard?
I was a fun ask about the ATF, how much in one fifty-one, and how much in one eighty-nine, and I asked to put that on these upstairs, so we can have a look at us.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Maynard?
Mayor, can we get an interpreter for the next Zoom meeting?
I'll work on that for you, Mr. Costley. Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the report, I got a motion, do I hear a second? Got a motion in the second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Report from the Budget Committee, Commissioner? No report. There are no resolutions in the packet, so are there any old business to come before